We need to get together and let our voices be heard.
This is Buffalo What's Next. I'm Jay Moran.
I'm Bridgette Jaipal Valenza.
I'm Dave Debo.
And I'm Thomas O'Neil White.
After May 14th, how can we afford not to talk about race?
About education, about segregation, about humanity.
Since the dawn of this nation, racial violence has existed. The way we have designed our society has a big hand in what occurred in that TOPS market.
In the suburban area everywhere, we must work and teach our children.
We need to make sure that we put more funding in our programs that help prevent gun violence and more money into art.
If we're going to have some real healing, we've got to have space to tell some uncomfortable truths.
This is Dave Debo. So often on this program, we talk about reform. Today, we start looking at that in earnest with what we hope will be a series of occasional interviews with those who seek to challenge the incumbents on the Buffalo City Council. Coming up in just a bit, Jay Moran with the first of those, chatting with candidate Eve Shippins, running in the North District.
The council people look at the snow removal plan every year and approve it. We did not get plowed out till late Tuesday.
That's in about 20 minutes from now, but first, more about what was done during that Christmas blizzard and how communities did not get all the resources that they needed, and what can be done about it. Jessica Bauer Walker from the Community Health Worker Network of Buffalo is here to talk about the Anchor Coalition of community groups. It worked during COVID, it worked during the blizzard, but she still has concerns about how the entire blizzard was handled by city and county officials. Jessica, thanks for taking the time to be with us.
Thanks for having me.
Tell me a little bit about the problems you felt occurred during the blizzard.
I think this was really a failure of communication and our ability to leverage relationships and really work in a top-down and bottom-up way that really led to a citywide system fail. We could have done that differently if we had communicated more effectively.
Is the argument here just that it wasn't good communication or enough?
I think that we are oftentimes working in silos. There was a certain level of communication within the city, within the county, within the community. What we really need to be doing is communicating across all of these entities and understanding that none of us have, all of the answers are the full picture. For people that have cars, for instance, a driving ban and messaging around that might be appropriate. We are in a city where a lot of people do not have cars, and so some of the messaging that should have gone out and that could have been informed by community would be, don't go outside at all. What supports do need to have in place so that you have adequate food and other basic supplies? If you're not dealing with those experiences on a day-to-day basis, you might not know that those are the messages that really need to get out to the most vulnerable in our community.
Is it safe, then, to say your issue with the communication is, it may have been tone-deaf, that it didn't embrace everybody it should have embraced?
So there are effective practices in terms of disaster response, which really weren't implemented here. So the communication has to go with collaboration, has to go with coordination. It has to really be infused in that way. If people are thinking more about what they don't know and who they need to connect with, we would be in a much better place right now.
So part of it's communication, but you also mentioned a lack of support. What sort of support?
I think that, again, we need to be communicating across systems. The work that we do through this group, Anchor, is really bridging and connecting the dots. Thinking in that manner, that none of us have all of the answers, and we work in an asset-based community development model to assess needs from a variety of perspectives, really focusing on diversity, equity, and inclusion, and thinking about who are the most vulnerable in our community, who have been historically excluded. Let's make sure that we're getting our responses informed by them. And so supports need to be in place in that way. For instance, if a resident calls 311, which is the Call and Resolution Center for the City of Buffalo, there should be a system in place that's prioritizing urgent needs. Folks that are in crisis, they often don't even know how to use that system, let alone be able to call back over and over again or get their needs met. So I think we need to use our systems and the infrastructure that's available to be able to put systems in place. You know, we saw during the blizzard that everyday citizens were going out and rescuing each other, and that's really phenomenal. We really applaud those efforts, but that's some of the work that the system should have been doing. And people were putting themselves in significant risk because they were going out, working on saving each other, or using systems like social media and Facebook to save ourselves and each other. And we could more effectively be utilizing the infrastructure that the system has, right? There's some things that we can do on our own to prepare. There are some things we can do with each other to help one another, but there are some things that just aren't our job to do. We don't have snowplows. We don't have the type of infrastructure for communications that our government systems have. Buffalo Public Schools was totally shut down during that time, and we could have maybe proactively communicated and used our schools to be hubs and warming shelters, so.
Is that what you mean by schools as warming centers? Is that what you mean when you said earlier, community-based assets?
Yeah, so we use this framework of asset-based community development, and it's really about mapping all of the assets that we have. And some of those are infrastructure pieces, for instance, the schools that are around our community, and some of them are everyday relationships. And so knowing who the right people are to talk to, right? Knowing that the mayor and the county executive and the superintendent, for instance, are very busy dealing with a lot of things. Who are the other people in those systems? For instance, you know, in the work that we were doing around organizing in an asset-based community development model, we were using the Director of Citizen Services at the city and the Deputy County Executive to get a significant amount of things done very quickly. And so unless you have those relationships in place, you know, infrastructure is a part of safety, and I think we need to be focusing more on our social infrastructure and our relationships as a way to keep us safe.
Is it fair to criticize the procedures during this particular blizzard? I want to play a cut of some of the defense that Mayor Brown rolled out in the aftermath of the blizzard, basically saying, this was a once-in-a-lifetime event.
The storm conditions in the City of Buffalo were the most adverse in all of Erie County, in all of Western New York. The numbers of snowfall, the numbers for wind gusts, the numbers of sad fatalities. Every expert is saying that the major impacts of this storm were in the City of Buffalo. We worked it around the clock. We never gave up, and these were historic blizzard conditions. It was reported before the blizzard hit that this was going to be a life-threatening storm. I said that people should not drive. Department of Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Department of Parking, and many others worked around the clock, saving lives and responding to the needs of our residents. They were the people that were on the ground in these blizzard conditions, working feverishly to get to people and to answer calls nonstop.
Is that enough of a defense for you?
Again, I want to assume good intent and that people are doing their best, and you know, we can look at things in hindsight and say that we did better, could do better next time. This is not a once-in-a-lifetime event. We have dealt with multiple crisis situations, and we need to do better and prepare. We know for catastrophic weather events, climate change is real, and we've had two quote-unquote "historic" blizzards just this season, and so this is going to keep happening. We are going to have other types of community crises, and we need to have a way that we work together and respond to crisis situations and not say, oh, we didn't see that coming. We didn't see a mass shooting coming on May 14th. We didn't see a lot of things coming, a pandemic coming, but we've dealt with multiple crisis situations, and we need to get better at dealing with those as the new normal.
You beat me to it. I was going to bring in 514. Is this a lesson after a lesson after a lesson? I know your organization did a lot of work with COVID, and we'll get there in a second. To you, it sounds like it's not just the blizzard.
I feel like we have just been dealing with crisis on top of crisis. Even before the COVID pandemic, things, I think, have been escalating in terms of inequities and the things that our community is dealing with. And there has been just a next level of trauma and stress that has been placed on the entire world, you know, the United States, but Buffalo in particular, because it is such a poor and highly segregated city. This has really taken a toll on our community. People are dealing with trauma on all levels, historical trauma, racialized trauma, community trauma. And so we need to stop working the way that we've been working and understand we're dealing with a very different environment. It is extremely volatile. There's a lot of uncertainty and complexity, and people are not okay. We have to really take a good, hard look at, are we making progress in terms of equity?
You've used the word equity quite a few times there. To you, is this a racial equity issue, or is it just a matter of rich and poor?
Absolutely. We know that these things intersect. Racial equity intersects with socioeconomic equity. We know from the data that folks that are white and living in the suburbs and have more means are doing a lot better in terms of the jobs that they have access to, the education, their ability to weather a storm, their ability not to be targeted by a white supremacist shooter. So we need to start putting systems in place where we make sure that we're prioritizing the most vulnerable in our community.
We're talking with Jessica Bauer Walker from the Community Health Worker Network of Buffalo. One of the things that they've done in the past is called Anchor. Talk a little bit about what you've done during COVID and maybe what you've learned during COVID.
So back in March of 2020, when the COVID pandemic broke out, there was myself and a group of other frontline organizations and frontline leaders who said, we need to do something here. It doesn't look like there's a whole lot of movement to coordinate a response. We don't really even know what's going on here. And so we got together, myself with the Community Health Worker Network and our umbrella organization of Connect, Push Buffalo, Native American Community Services, Buffalo Urbanly, and said, you know, we're a diverse group of organizations, that we understand the community and each other, and so we can mobilize together to make sure that our community is okay. So we founded this coalition called Anchor, which stands for Addressing Needs for Community Health Opportunity and Resiliency. And we quickly started mobilizing, meeting every Thursday at 4:00, and bringing in all kinds of people, from government officials to funders that had resources, to healthcare. And it started out with just understanding what is COVID? Should we be wearing masks or not wearing masks? And evolved to things like testing and treatment, dealing with things like childcare and education. And, you know, then when we were dealing with racial and political uprising, making sure that people were okay and there were safety plans in place.
I don't want to minimize the importance of not having silos, but is just getting that group of people together around a table enough? I've got to think there were other things you did, too.
Absolutely. I mean, part of that is the practice, I think, of community organizing, which is undervalued sometimes. And sometimes we think about, you know, community organizers and activists on the ground, working on a specific issue, you know, police brutality or something like that. And so it's not just about bringing people to the table. We're not meeting for the sake of meeting. We have these one-hour meetings, and we're doing high-level community organizing. We're understanding, okay, what's the city doing? What's the county doing? What's Buffalo Public Schools doing? What are our academic partners doing? What are the funders doing? What are the community-based organizations, big and small? What are these mutual aid neighborhood pods and block clubs doing? We map that out. We have a shared understanding of what community needs are. We figure out who can bring what to the table, and we start deploying resources and hold each other accountable. You know, I'm holding myself accountable, too. So accountability is not a bad thing. I think sometimes the system sees our organizing and our advocacy as a threat, and maybe it is a threat to the system at large, right?
It's agitation. You're just stirring the pot.
And that's important. I think it's important that we're engaged in some ways in principled struggle and that it's okay to disagree. It's okay to see things differently. I think that is one of the challenges of living in a segregated city. It's not a mystery here. We know we live in a highly segregated city and that in times of crisis, again, we find ways to work together, but then we go back into our corners that feel comfortable. And we need to start getting uncomfortable. We need to start forming relationships and talking to people who don't think like us. And so that's our role. That's what Anchor does. That's the role that I play as a community health worker and a community organizer, is to help bring people together. And we can disagree on 90% of things, but let's find the 10% that we can agree on and work on. And when our community is in crisis, we do not have a choice but to start working together.
This might be an apples versus oranges question, but you did this work with Anchor during COVID, and it was successful. You were in place during the blizzard. Why didn't it work then? Is it just a matter of scope and size?
Well, actually, it did work. I think that a lot of things that are working sometimes aren't seen. On Christmas, our anchor leaders are talking to each other. The day after, we decide we're going to call a meeting the next day. So we put a notice out on December 26 at 3:30 PM to call for a meeting at 1:00 the next day, and we have 90 people show up. So to me, that's successful, right? And again, we had people across leadership positions and government and multiple systems of government, large organizations like Feed More, grassroots organizations and Facebook groups like the Buffalo Blizzard Group, who came together, understood what the needs were, and within an hour, had identified key pieces. Like Feed More couldn't get food out because they needed to get plowed out from their pantries. The Deputy County Executive was there and said, I'm sending plows right now. That got done immediately. There was a need for warming shelters, and the Code Blue Initiative, again, was having issues with getting people in and out and snow removal. And so that was deployed immediately. There was unclear messaging going to the community about how to use 911, the 858 snow line, 311. And so we were able to very quickly hash out messaging and get messages out by social media and traditional media. And so I think a lot of good things happened that were not necessarily seen.
I want to go back to the administration of the first president, George Bush. He had a thing where he wanted to try and get faith-based organizations more involved with the stuff that government's doing, the old thousand points of light speech, the idea that community groups and faith groups and volunteers represent all those points of light and that it's a huge resource for any town, community, or in his case, he was saying a nation. If all these community groups are so good at doing this, then isn't the government's place just to create policy and not be those foot soldiers to the same degree?
I think to some degree, it's important to support community efforts and to understand our respective roles and responsibilities and what our scope of work is. And so I know sometimes, you know, as I'm working, like with an individual community member, there's a situation where they're having a mental health issue. I'm not a mental health professional. I have to refer that out. If a street is clogged with snow, I don't have a snowplow. I got to get the city there. I know how to leverage that, right? So I think really empowering community efforts and understanding, systems don't quite understand the culture of community and how to empower the community. One of the things that I think we had shared agreement on after this past round of Anchor, including the city and the county, was a commitment to work together to form neighborhood hubs. And those neighborhood hubs would have trusted community leaders, block club leaders, folks that are, you know, known in the community, and that also can connect to the system. And so one of the things that we're talking about is, can we bring all of our resources together, share what we know, and then say, how are we going to form these neighborhood mobilization hubs? One of the major issues in the blizzard was that it had to be hyper-local, right? And so that's where the help was coming, was on this Buffalo Blizzard Facebook page to say, hey, is anybody over on Zellmer Street that can rescue my brother and his baby who don't have any heat in the house? Oh, yes, I'm close by, I can get them over to a church. And so if we had proactively neighborhood mobilization hubs, we could make sure that we were okay, not reactively, not once harm had happened, but proactively to say, a blizzard is coming, or an unexpected disaster has happened, and then we can mobilize quickly to take care of each other. And so that's one of the things that we're talking about that seems to have a lot of commitment and understanding, both on a community level as well as from the system, but it's going to take work.
So you're not saying it's the city's fault that they weren't on Zellmer, but there needed to be, or city, county, whatever, the system, as you say, but there needed to be more plan?
Yes. And I think some of our efforts before, we have had different efforts, where we're bringing different kinds of people together. So for instance, we worked on a project with the Lead Safe Task Force, where we had the city and housing inspectors paired with a community health worker who was of and from that particular community, both frontline folks, right? But our community-based organizations, they don't have the resources that the city has to do lead mitigation, right? So the city has all of these resources and all of these housing inspectors, but they're not going to have the community connection in context. And especially if there's another issue, you're knocking on the door, you're talking to somebody about lead, and guess what? There's a domestic violence situation. There's a water shut-off that happened. Now, there's a mental health crisis. And so that's where it's really important for us to work together, not just one person, but you know, who are the appropriate people to work as a team or work as a group so that we can have a really holistic approach to making sure community needs are met.
You started to talk about it a moment ago. What does the ideal system, therefore, then, look like, apart from just more people around the table, more deployment of community resources?
Yeah, I like to think about that in multiple layers. I think there's been a lot of good language around diversity, equity, and inclusion. And again, when we have a situation like the massacre at TOPS, there's all of these statements around racial justice and equity. But the data is showing that we're not getting better in terms of racial justice and equity. And so what are the policies that are in place that ensure that, right? Are there policies that can be put in place that make sure that our systems are prioritizing those that are historically excluded? We need to have practices in place that are trauma-informed and community and culture responsive. This is not just a training. This is a way of practicing, right?
Let me dissect each chunk of that. You talked about culturally appropriate means and methods and also trauma-informed procedures. Explain each of those.
To be kind of community and culture responsive, we want to know where that person is at and that it's not a one-size-fits-all approach. So for instance, I am knocking on a door, and a Muslim woman answers, and I've got a white male housing inspector who wants to come in the house. That's not appropriate, right? And just to even know that that's not appropriate and that that's going to make that woman and that household uncomfortable, you have to know that, right? And then you have to have somebody that can come in, right? And so oftentimes, if we're going into a particular community, and even in my community, maybe I'm the lead door knocker, but if I'm going into a community that's not my own, I have somebody of and from that community that's knocking on the door, that's explaining to me, there's a lot of nuances in different communities, and unless you know that and talk to people who are of and from that community, you won't know.
So that's the culturally sensitive part. What about the trauma-informed procedures?
So a trauma-informed process and way of working, we use this language of shifting from not what's wrong with you, but what happened to you. And so sometimes we see people behaving in ways that seem very strange and unexplainable, sometimes violent. And instead of saying, what's wrong with you, to say, what happened to you? Because this is not a normal way that I would behave, right? And so there's lots of layers around trauma-informed approaches and practice, but that's kind of the essential piece, to know a lot of people, particularly in our community, have had significant harm. So just to really understand, to be sensitive, to know, people are coming with a whole bunch of stuff, and we need to approach them with care, concern, and sensitivity.
What is the template? Do we need more anchors?
I think we need layers of things, and that's part of the challenge, is it's not a one thing is going to save us. And I think that's what we're struggling with as a community and as a society, because we're in such complex times. Community work is messy. I say that all the time, that people look at like community work like it's this, oh, you're a do-gooder, things happen, it'll be great. It's this fun stuff, but community work is very difficult, and it's a practice set. And sometimes you're, you know, working on policy change. Sometimes you're sitting in somebody's house for three hours when they need help.
Talk again as we close here about accountability. What sort of response have you had from government? You've been talking about these ideas for a couple of days now. Are you getting traction, do you think?
I am hopeful. There's oftentimes a language of commitment initially, and then it's hard to get the follow-through. So I think we're in a critical piece right now where we have to not give up. So I think that we have to continue to keep that space going, and that that's part of what we've really tried to do with Anchor and in terms of our relationships with the key folks across these systems, is make sure that there is a shared accountability. We're transparent. We continue to put messages out there, both in terms of our internal group, making sure that there's a cohesive community narrative and accountability, that we're all accountable. And when we say that we're going to do something, that we do our best to follow through and do it.
How much faith do you put in the outside university review that the city is conducting?
I am honestly not sure. I have asked for there to be a process that the community is involved in. I do have some questions about it. I think it's good that they're doing it. So we'll see what happens, but again, I think that that needs to happen out in the open. There should be public meetings and public process associated with that.
So as we close here, if there's one thing, is it basically just more community planning, more resources? Pick, and I know it's hard, because I hear what you said about it's more than one solution, no silver bullet, but what's your number one?
My number one is relationships. And I know that, again, that seems difficult to people to wrap their head around because it is a softer type of thing, but if we're grounded in relationship to ourselves, to each other, and to our community, a lot of these problems can get solved. And so I think we have to remember the social infrastructure and our relationships have to be built. That'll help us with communication. That'll help us with accountability. That'll help us with everything else, because you have a trust in the people around you and your neighbors. And there's actual data to back up that communities that are most resilient and safest are the ones that are most socially connected.
Final question. Is it a lack of systems or a lack of will?
Both. It's always both, a combination of skill and will.
Jessica, thanks for your time.
Thanks so much for talking with me.
Jessica Bauer Walker is with the Community Health Worker Network of Buffalo. This is Dave Debo. Stay with us. This is Buffalo What's Next on WBFO.
Watch the W N E D PBS original production, Garden Wisdom, for Western New York and Southern Ontario. Learn the secrets to planning, cultivating, and nurturing your own extraordinary garden using time-proven solutions and sustainable methods. Garden Wisdom, now streaming on YouTube and the PBS Video App.
Listen to Buffalo What's Next weekday mornings at 10:00 AM on WBFO or on the WBFO app. Use the Talk to Us feature to leave your questions and comments.
This is Buffalo What's Next, where we have conversations with the community about moving forward. To have your voice heard, press the Talk to Us button on the WBFO app, and we'll work to get your questions and comments on the air. Join us on Twitter at WBFO or email us at news@wbfou.org. Together, we'll have the conversations that are needed. This is WBFO, your NPR station.
This is Buffalo What's Next, and today, we are in Amherst Street in beautiful Buffalo, the North District, as a matter of fact, to be more specific. And we're here talking with North District Council Candidate Eve Shippins. Good morning, Eve.
Good morning.
Thanks for taking the time to talk to me today, and a lot to talk about, of course, when it comes to running for office, but I'd really like to just start about a conversation about this district, the North District. Give me, when people ask you about, what's the North District all about? What do you tell them?
The North District is this great district that is very diverse and has a long history of immigrants moving into the district and really settling here and making it their home. And we still see that today. But we also see a transition from being working-class families to a high-poverty district. We are the second, 14207 is the second poorest ZIP code in the city. We also see a switch over to mainly landlord housing as opposed to owner-occupied. So a lot of the neighborhood is losing the neighborhood feel, because when people rent and there's no owner-occupied, less people invest. People are more transient in living here. We've seen a giant rise in drug and alcohol abuse in this area, homelessness. And a lot of these things are quality-of-life issues that people who are really struggling need extra support in.
You, like you said, it's the 14207 ZIP code that we're talking about here, but we were talking, what, in terms of neighborhoods? Are we talking about Blackrock? I mean, lay out the neighborhood. Just again, give more of an identity to people who aren't familiar with it.
Well, the 14207, which is the biggest part of the North District, is Blackrock, Riverside, and the Grand Amherst neighborhoods.
Okay, all right. Did you grow up here?
I grew up actually on the west side of Buffalo, but I bought a house here in, actually, seven years ago, so I've been here just a little over seven years. I am familiar with the neighborhood. Before that, my best friend grew up on Riverside, and I spent my whole summers in Riverside and a lot of nights after school. And my kids also played and cheered for the Riverside football team.
Okay, okay. So you have a feel for the neighborhood and the district in that regard. Let's talk about a positive element of why would people, why do people like being here?
For me, it's the diversity. That's why I moved into this neighborhood. I lived on the west side in a rapidly gentrifying neighborhood, and I sold my house because I miss the diversity. I like having neighbors of all different ethnicities, bringing different cultures, because there's a richness in that. And I think that that's something that I personally embrace. And if you go and look at the small businesses that are opening up, the restaurants in this area, it, food from all around the world, different colors, cultures, flavors, and I think that's important.
Let's get back to some of the issues. Like you said, poverty is an issue in this area as well. How about from a council standpoint? How can a council person impact poverty in this neighborhood? That's, I know it's a tough one, but you know, you're just one person, would be, if you were elected, just one person in a deliberative body, but how can that person impact poverty? impact that?
One of the biggest things, I think, when we talk about poverty, because obviously this isn't just one council district, it's not something one council person could change. But I believe in building collaborative relationships, and that means building them with the people most impacted by the issue, with community organizations already doing the work, and also with all different levels of government. As a council person, you should have relationships with your county representatives, your statewide representatives, and your federal representatives, so that when you identify the issues in your community, you can bring it to people and lobby on a personal basis for the changes that are needed in your community. And I think that we're missing that interconnectedness between the different levels of government to really identify these problems and bring the resources to the people.
So you are actively speaking to citizens in the neighborhood?
Yes.
What are people saying?
When I talk to people in the neighborhood, it's all quality-of-life issues. People are talking about garbage collection. People are talking about snow removal and digging out bus shelters. Being able to have access to the supermarkets is an important thing. Bus service. So all of these are quality-of-life issues. What we're doing in Riverside Park, the fact that the pools didn't open, and that kids are swimming in the river, which is highly dangerous. So people want to see these everyday little things that you should be able to take for granted. They want to see action on those kind of things.
You mentioned snow removal. So tell me what things were like here during the Christmas blizzard.
Now, that's an interesting one. I live on Amherst Street. It is a bus route, and it is also a business district. It has two supermarkets within three blocks. We did not get plowed out till late Tuesday, and--
Amherst Street.
Amherst Street. And so the supermarkets couldn't open. So people were--
So Tops supermarket, which is right across the street here, was not open until late Tuesday?
Yes. Well, they were, they actually took even longer because they had a power outage that they had to fix, but they couldn't bring the trucks in to fix it because of the, because of the lack of snow removal. So you literally saw people, with their whole families, once it got safe enough to walk around on Monday, you saw the, like, all these people were going on pilgrimages across the neighborhood to find open corner stores where they can buy food. Whole families out there with their grocery bags, looking for places to buy food, because we were told to get enough food till Monday.
Right.
And Monday came, and nothing was open, except the small mom-and-pop stores. And it was really shocking to see. Amherst Street also being a bus route and a business street, doesn't allow parking overnight all winter long. So when I heard that we can't plow streets because of all the cars congesting, the plows can't get down the streets, there was a car about, on average, once a block between here and Elmwood, stuck in the snow. Nothing parked on the street, no cars blocking. Plows could have gotten around these cars. So it was very shocking and sad to see, like, this could have been done better. This is a major street. This should have been a priority street. And I understand maybe they needed the specialized equipment, maybe they couldn't just plow it through.
Sure, sure.
But I didn't necessarily see where this was made a priority, so we can have food for our residents.
And I want to try to be as specific as I can. This is a bit of an eye-opener. I mean, I know there were parts of the city that obviously didn't get the service maybe that others do, and I suppose other people can talk to that. But when you say not plowed out, I mean, you know, are you talking about you never, you didn't see a plow, or maybe it just, there was a couple of passes but didn't make it passable?
Not at all. No plow.
No plow down Amherst Street?
No.
From the, so the blizzard started on a Friday, you're saying you didn't see a plow on Amherst Street until?
Until Tuesday.
From Friday until Tuesday?
Yes.
Wow. That's stunning. That's stunning for sure. Obviously, that's an issue with the executive branch and, you know, people who oversee those departments. Do you think, if you were a council person, you would have, I guess, a remedy for that? You know, what, I mean, do you think a council member can have an influence on that type of thing?
The council people look at the snow removal plan every year and approve it. So--
So then you're suggesting, or tell me that this was part of the plan, that Amherst Street, in a greater plan, wasn't part of a priority for the city?
I'm not sure whether it was or not, but the council people need to hold the mayor and executive branch accountable when things don't happen the way it should. One of the things that was said was that the plan was not for more than six inches of snow. I'm a Buffalo public school teacher, and in 2022, we had snowfall in, I believe it was January, the end of February or beginning of March, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. And all four times, well, the first three, the fourth time, schools were closed for the holiday. But three times, schools were closed extra days because of the fact that streets weren't plowed. So that's four times in one year that we've had snow emergencies, and the streets weren't plowed to resume business in, as quick as our neighbors outside of the city. I understand that Buffalo has some conditions that make it harder, like we don't have as much off-street parking. But all of these things need to be planned for, so that we can resume business as usual as quick as possible.
How much snow? How much snow was out, right out here on Amherst Street? Can you, can you give, give me an idea of what we're looking at here?
We had some drifting. My side of the street had maybe about two feet. The opposite side of the street where it was drifted was probably closer to four.
We're talking with Eve Shippins this morning here. We're at her campaign headquarters on Amherst Street in Buffalo. She is a North District Council candidate, as a matter of fact, and interesting. So you're officially in this. Why are you in this?
Well, I love my city. Buffalo is a great city in so many ways.
What ways? What makes Buffalo great?
Again, the diversity and the community, the sense of community. Like, when their emergency, when an emergency happens, people are ready to step up and help each other. And that's something great. We're like a big, small town.
Okay.
And that's the part I love about it. But I also, I'm a Buffalo teacher. I've been teaching almost 22 years. And I've seen better times and worse times, and it plays out a lot in the classroom. When times are good in Buffalo and everyone has jobs, kids do better in school. Kids come in ready to learn with materials, get better grades. And then when things make a downturn, so does what happens in the classroom. You see more disengagement, more trauma in children's lives. And I love my job teaching, but I know there's a lot of decisions that are being made by people who are not keeping their eye on what's happening with our youth. And I want the world to be a better place for them. They come into this world, and they are just, whatever circumstances, they have to live with it. And poverty is double the rate in the city than in the county, in the state, and more than double that of the country. And a lot of people don't realize, I'm sorry, childhood poverty, that is. Childhood poverty. A lot of people don't realize that how things are in Buffalo, like, we're very good at going, oh, this is just the way they are. It's not just the way they are. In other areas, they are dealing with these issues in other ways that help children and help, because children are our future. I'm getting older, I'm 51, you know? This, it's not about how the world is for me. I'm okay. I'm a 22-year teacher, you know? But, you know, what's the world going to be like for my students? What's the world going to be like for my kids? Am I even going to be able to have grandkids if we continue on this trajectory? So I really feel like it's important for us to start thinking about what we're leaving for the next generation. And also, one of the big things is civic engagement. My students don't see themselves in leadership positions. They grew up in poverty, as I did, and they don't see themselves as decision-makers. And it's important to show them that they can be anything. We say this to kids, like, oh, you could grow up to be anything? But do we, do we mean it? Are we showing them that they can? Are we giving them the steps to take to do that? So by running for common council and by winning common council, I'm going to show them that I did it, you can do it too. And I know that I have former students who have already signed up to volunteer on my campaign. I've had a few former students who have donated to my campaign, and that feels fantastic.
Interesting that you mentioned your childhood and coming up. So you grew up in the city of Buffalo. What's different now than when Eve Shippins was growing up?
My family came to Buffalo when I was five. It was in '77, after the blizzard. I came in the summer. And we moved into the west side. And the west side was, at that time, experiencing white flight. So it was an interesting time to move into the west side of Buffalo. There are a lot of people were moving out. People were burning down their houses, literally, for insurance money to be able to flee. And you saw the neighborhood rapidly integrate and turn from owner-occupied to rentals. And we lived there, we were poor, and it was, it was a rough neighborhood. It was. But it also had a lot of diversity, which, again, I appreciate. And you saw businesses close down along Grant Street and along Ferry, since that was the neighborhood I lived in, and along Connecticut. And you saw the blight, you saw the depression. So when things started to be revitalized, at first, it seemed like this is a good thing. But we need to really balance revitalization with making sure that we are not pushing out the people that really live here, that we need to bring them up with the city. Like, it's, it's great that we have a nice waterfront. It's great that there are things happening in the city to beautify it and bring businesses in. But one of the things that I really love to see is the small businesses coming in, like on Grant Street, and that's largely immigrant-based businesses who have come and opened businesses in the city. And I'd like to see more small businesses opening up and not, to really have that whole sense of community and investment, as opposed to the big-box stores coming in that take the money, and it goes where?
What about the possibilities for Amherst Street? It's interesting here, there, you know, it's Sportsman's Tavern here, which has, of course, become an iconic location here in the city of Buffalo as well. And there's a couple of other businesses along the stretch here. What are the possibilities for Amherst Street?
This one I think a lot about. Sportsman is a great neighbor, just very considerate. I can't even tell you how great it's been, living next to them. Everyone says, are you okay with it? Because it's music 24/7. Not really 24/7. They're very respectful about when they shut down, but, but it's constant music. Some of it I love, some of it I don't love. But that is like the business, kind of business people that I really think that we need more of in the city. They all live in this neighborhood, they employ people who walk to work, and they've invested to build up this business. And they're bringing people in from outside of the city to spend their money on Amherst Street. And I think that's fantastic. But then I look at some of the issues on the street. We've, we're a major opioid epidemic area.
Okay.
And so we had people literally fall out overdosed over the summer on the street while Sportsman has a concert. And we also have Friday afternoon garbage collection. I know this sounds like not a giant issue.
But it's a neighborhood issue, right?
But it's more than that. This is a business district. They've invested over a million dollars in that business. So when you have Friday afternoon garbage collection, if anything is missed, it's not until Monday that it gets picked up, at the earliest. So your busiest night as a music venue is Friday and Saturday nights. So garbage cans and uncollected garbage sits out in front of all these houses during their busiest days. If I'm coming in from an affluent community to hear a concert, and I park in front of, I don't know, somebody's old mattress that's on the curb, which is legal to throw out, the garbage men are supposed to collect it, but it's sitting there, and I have to step past a used mattress, how am I going to feel? Am I going to want to go there again? So that's a very simple thing to address for Amherst Street and the business districts. In New York City, you never see garbage out in business districts on a weekend. That would be unheard of. They collect garbage early in the morning. And it's not just garbage, it's also the lighting here. The lighting's not adequate. So again, people are coming in from outside of the city who already may feel like, I'm not sure whether this is a safe area, and then you're walking and there's not enough streetlights. You're walking over here, do you feel safe? So what are we doing to make Amherst Street feel safe and welcoming for people coming into the city, which is what we want? We want people to come into the city and spend their money here and invest in our neighborhood. And all these small things can change to make the quality of the street, the streetscape, just more attractive, so people don't feel as nervous about coming here.
Sure. Interesting, you mentioned about New York City and garbage collection, because earlier you also mentioned how there are other places around the country that have child poverty issues, and they have found different ways to address that. Are you familiar with some of those? I mean, is that part of your policy process, I guess, moving forward here? That you think there are things that, lessons that you are seeing elsewhere that could be applicable to the city of Buffalo?
I definitely do, and I'm still researching best practices. One of the things that, as an educator, I know, is homeownership is such a big component of children being successful in schools. Because when you own a home, you have a more stable household. And a lot of our kids in the Buffalo Public Schools move around a lot, sometimes three, four, five times in a school year. So this stability is key for academic achievement. And when kids are freed from worrying about where they're going to live, what they're going to eat, then they have time to learn. It's not taking up that part of their brain. They can actually come to class, ready to learn, and just focus on the academics. And one of the things that I'd like to see in Buffalo, we have, the average homeownership across the country is about 60-something percent, and in Buffalo, we're in the 40s. And so we need to look at how to help working-class homeowners or working-class folks become homeowners. Because this stabilizes communities, it makes healthy neighborhoods, it helps children be more ready for school and focus in school. So one of the key things that I think would really improve outcomes is to look at, again, owner occupancy of homes and supporting working-class people getting into housing. We look at, a lot of people talk about the rentals, and people pay the rent on time, $1,300 rent, for years, yet they can't qualify for a mortgage, using that as evidence that I can afford this.
Right, right.
And so we really need to look into what kind of housing programs we can bring into the city, and what, also, what kind of housing programs are already here? One of the things I see a lot is that a lot of people don't know-- One of the things I see a lot is that a lot of people don't know of the programs that are already in Buffalo, that they already qualify for. I'm a big one who, I've, I've used Nicerda program for energy improvements in my, both in this house and the last house I owned. And I tell friends about it, and they don't even know what it is.
Right.
So this whole not having this information readily available to people, easily accessible, is one of the issues that we're seeing. Too much of the information is, goes through gatekeepers. And so when people are looking at, oh, I'd love to get a house, but I can't do it. There are programs. There's so many programs out there that people don't even know about, so they're not taking advantage of. And I think that really putting those out front, like, hey, there's all these programs that'll help you. And then seeing, after you see what's already out there, seeing what, where are the gaps? What, what are the obstacles that people still can't get into homes?
We're talking with Eve Shippins on Buffalo What's Next. Eve is running for the North District Council seat here in the city of Buffalo. And we're at her campaign headquarters on Amherst Street here in Buffalo. This is getting off the, the campaign just a little bit, but when you were talking about it, I have to ask this question about a teacher. And then when you started talking about kids worrying about, you know, do they have a place to live? Do you see homelessness in your classroom?
We definitely do.
Can you elaborate on what, how that manifests itself with kids?
So I don't actually look for it. We have all these little flags in the computer system that we could go and see, like, different scenarios that we might need to be alerted to. And I try to not start the year by looking at these flags because I want to know the individual, not hear the history.
Sure.
But I have noticed over time that certain kids who are, the kids who are consistently suspended, the kids who are consistently absent, the kids who are consistently failing. You start looking and you open up their flags. And a lot of them, it's McKinney-Vento is the program through the school district that deals with homeless students. And most of our students aren't homeless as in living on the street or even in shelters. Most of our kids are homeless as in they are sleeping on couches at various family members' houses. And that, again, is creating a lot of instability. So maybe grandma has a two-bedroom house. She's sleeping in one bedroom and a whole, her, her kids, her one kid and the grandkids are all sleeping in the other bedroom and on the couches. And
You're hearing stories like that?
Definitely. And it's increased certainly since the pandemic, but it's been a big problem in Buffalo. And parents being able to find apartments big enough for their family size. So the apartments are getting smaller and smaller, especially the new builds are usually two bedrooms.
Right.
Lucky if you could find three. So people are having a hard time affording the housing and also finding apartments big enough for their whole family. And so more people are, are doing this. And then if I'm, and I teach high school, so I'm going to be real about scenarios.
Sure, sure.
I had twins as students a couple of years ago. One was staying at a grandmother's, one was staying at the aunt's. So they're twins, not living together, not living with mom, even though mom is still the guardian. But mom is working, but mom had five kids. Good luck finding an apartment for that. And then the one was staying at her boyfriend's part-time. One of the twins was. So things would go home, homework would go home, books would go home. But whose house was she at tonight? And so things would rarely come back. Things would get lost. They were really, really bright young ladies, both of them. But they didn't have a good place to study. When they got, as soon as they left school, their minds were occupied with, where am I going? How am I going to get dinner? All of this. Because they were, being 16 years old, mom was focused on the younger kids and working. And they were kind of like left to kind of figure it out, like they had somewhere to go, but it wasn't stable. So their minds were focused on that instead of where it should be at 16.
You've done, I think, a, a great job of talking about a lot of the issues and the problems and obviously understanding what's going on in the classroom with your kids. Let's project forward a little bit here. And imagine Eve Shippins is the North District Council member. How will you be going about business knowing these types of issues are out there and need to be addressed?
One of the things I don't see enough is the civic engagement in disenfranchised communities. And I'm going to break that down
Sure, please.
simpler. So the people most impacted by poverty and racism in the city are not the ones who are necessarily going to block club meetings or community meetings or going and speaking at council or even at lobby days. So it's important to, to meet people where they are. And that means you go door-to-door. You talk to folks. You talk to folks when you're online somewhere. You, you talk to people where they are. And you also need to be approachable and easy to access. And that's one thing that, that I see myself as being this person. I am out in the community. I am part of many different community organizations, and outreach is very important.
Are you part of organizations here in this neighborhood?
I belong, I go to a few block club meetings, different community meetings.
Around, around this neighborhood, yeah?
Yeah, there's not a lot of diversity.
Okay.
There's not.
At these meetings, yeah.
And it tends to be older folks going to the, these meetings. And there is a valid reason for this. I'm 51, and this is when I find time in my life to actually run for council.
Right.
Because when my kids were younger
That was one full-time job, and you had the teacher's job, which was
Exactly.
a full-time and a half job.
So we see this with young families a lot. People are struggling to, to, to work and to raise kids and maybe run your kids through different activities. So they're not able to get to these meetings. And so going to meetings is a privilege. We, we need to realize this, is you have to have the time and available space to, to dedicate to this. And so I do go to community meetings around here, but they're, they don't necessarily represent the full diversity of the neighborhood. We're also talking about language access. And this is a neighborhood that has a lot of immigrants from Southeast Asia. And there's a lot of languages associated with that. So, so it is something that needs to be focused on to make sure the information is getting out. And a lot of these block clubs are not forward-facing. So they don't necessarily show, like, how you know, how you get into a block club or how you get information about what block club to get in, is you've got to call downtown and you say where you live, and then they forward your information to the appropriate block club. And I don't understand what's up with this gatekeeping. Every block club that's in the city should be publicly listed on the city's website with at least an email contact. If you don't want to put the personal information and say that
Your address, whatever it is.
Mary runs the Amherst Street Block Club, and this is her address and phone number. Fine, don't do that. The Amherst Street Block Club should have an email.